All right. We had a very productive meeting beforehand and now have almost as many in the audience as last meeting. But welcome and good evening to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council this Monday, March 19th, 2018. It's after 7:30 PM. The next meeting will be Monday, April 2nd, 2018. Mr. Paulo, as Clerk of Council, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Ansel?
Here.
Mr. Bastancic?
Here.
Mr. Cavan?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Mr. Sanders?
Here.
Mr. Silvestri?
Here.
Ms. Warden?
Here.
And we're all here. This eve of spring about to start with the snow and the four-crests, and they're great. Living the dream here in northeastern Ohio. At this time, I ask you to stand and join the members of the city council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I will look for a motion to approve the minutes from the March 5th council meeting. So a move by Ms. Warden is our second. Mr. Myers, all in favor of approving the minutes from March 5th, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And the March 5th, 2018 meeting minutes are approved. Communication from the mayor and administration. Welcome, Mayor. We had a busy beginning to our evening, and I'm sure we'll have a continued busy evening.
I agree completely.
Thank you for coming and talking tonight.
Absolutely. And my report's very short tonight, just because of, we've already talked about one of the subjects quite a bit. I do want to tell you that our intent is to work out an agreement with the Humane Society for this year. During that time, we plan on doing investigation with them as to what real costs are for the city of Worcester, what we can do about getting a humane agent in place, and then hopefully at this time next year, we will have a contract that everybody can feel very good about and everybody understands it. So that's our intent, and unless we hear something differently from the Humane Society or from council members, we will move forward with that. Other than that, you've got some important pieces of legislation in front of you this evening, other things that will change the complex of our complexion of our community. So we are here to assist in any way we can and wish you well in making those hard decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Petitions? I see a couple of people that I think all are on here to discuss the rezoning. Is that correct? Justin Starling?
President, I was speaking on the tax incentive.
Oh, the tax incentive? Okay.
Requested.
Okay. And then...
And Raj, I think, was on the rezoning.
Raj is on the rezoning. And I'm sure Mrs. Stein's on the rezoning. I saw her earlier. There we are. That Malay's a tall drink of water, I guess. So on the tax incentive, do you want to wait and talk just before we...
That would be fine.
Okay. And then since the rezoning is going to be the follow right after the public portion, we might as well have Raj, and I can't read your last name because strangely enough, your writing is worse than mine.
You're right.
And we'll also have Mrs. Stein also talk. So Raj, you want to go first? And say your last name for me.
Chanda. Not Chanda.
Okay.
C-H-A-N-D-A-T.
Okay.
I was one of the worst student in my class in the writings.
I'm with you.
I tried to, but it's not working. Yes, we are here for the zoning change in the Great Barrier parking lot. Intention is to put a hotel there, 98th Holiday Inn Express, with the latest prototype and standards and everything. And for us to build a hotel in the parking lot along with the event center requires a zoning change, and therefore we have applied for the zoning. And I can go in detail about the entire project. I can go in detail on economic impact that will bring into the city, and I can take lots of time, but you know, I'll make it very short and simple. This 98th Hotel, we are expecting an occupancy somewhere around 65 to 68 person occupancy. And the hotels like that, we have developed in cities like Sheffield Village and City of Hilaria, which I think we have submitted letters to the council member to get more knowledge of that one. And that has impacted those cities anywhere from $300,000 to $350,000 in taxes, employment, and so many other ways it has helped the city, as well as our self-successful business. And we are in the hotel business for the last 20 to 25 years. We have nearest hotel we have here is Ontario, Medina, Sheffield Village, Hilaria, and Lima, Ohio. Those are the hotels we have. So all I've done in my life is build the hotels and run the hotels, and we are family business. And then, you know, Worcester was in my vision to build a hotel for the last five to six years, and the timing wasn't just working out. And now it's, everything's falling together. Our franchise is approved, our financing is approved, and I'm in good shape to do that. So in order for us to proceed for that project, zoning change is what we need. So other than that, Holiday Inn Express we are building is upcoming and newer, better structured brand now. I think everybody's aware of Holiday Inn, but this is the Holiday Inn Express Hotel and Suites. So it's like 75 person suites with meeting facilities in there, breakfast facility. And if all goes well, we are trying to add a little more to this project, is to do a rooftop bar for our hotel guests. It's going to be a rooftop garden bar. This is only if Holiday Inn Express approves it. So that's something we're going to bring this hotel to be for later. And we choose Worcester for that because I've been traveling from here on Worcester to Alliance and Canton for like last 15 years from Ontario. I live in Ontario, Ohio. So very excited about this project and I'd have your questions. I can answer any of your questions now or later.
Do you want to ask questions now or do you want to ask later?
Okay.
What?
Later's fine.
Later's fine, okay. And Mrs. Stein, who's hiding behind Jonathan Malay?
Well, not on purpose. I'll be sitting here first. Good evening. Thank you for sitting here. As you all know, I'm the owner of property for the Chelsea. 23 years ago, when we actually built the park center, we were designated a C1 by the Planning Commission and city council. However, that conditional use, which is what we are now, actually expires when the business ceases to operate for 12 months. So obviously, we're coming up with that. By granting the change to a C3, we would then be a permitted use and believe that that would be, it will be, a more accurate zoning designation for this parcel. This will also allow the hotel to be constructed, which would greatly complement the event center and continue it as such. As I expressed in my previous contact with each of you, I am willing to, if need be, to limit the, consider reducing the capacity for the venue if that's necessary. So we have Andrew Dutton's information, his recommendation that this indeed does fit the master plan, and of course, the unanimous vote by the zoning board to pass this also. So again, I'm also available for questions. Thank you.
All right. No real committee reports. We did have a budgetary review of the Humane Society contract. I think some traction was made. And if nothing else, everyone that left here, maybe not completely happy, but I think it was, we all shared the vision that the city of Worcester and county as well, since it would benefit the county as a humane agent, needs to be established, hopefully within the year. So if nothing else, I think that was the positive that came out of that meeting. That finally brings us to the old business, which would be the third reading of ordinance number 2018 dash 006. And if you would be so kind as to read the title, Mr. Paulo, I would be grateful.
Ordinance number 2018 dash 006. An ordinance amending Part 11 zoning of codified ordinances of the city of Worcester Bio, so as to rezone land to a C3 community commercial district for property located at 50 Riffle Road.
All right, this will be presented by Mr. Sanders, and I turn the floor over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, we've had discussion on this property, on the zoning change on this property now for two of the meetings. And at this point, I appreciate those that have come this evening to speak regarding this. We've, I know I have had a lot of conversation regarding this, but nothing in a manner that we had this evening, which is at a public meeting. So I appreciate you folks coming. The bottom line with this is while one could look at this and one could argue pro and con until cows come home, the end of the day, what we have to consider before us this evening was specifically related to this, is the fact that is the request to make the zoning change appropriate within the confines of our current zoning standards? All the peripheral concerns that have been voiced and discussed at great length, while they are interesting topics to discuss, at the end of the day, they really aren't part of what we have to look at in front of us. And Mrs. Stein really kind of surmised it very well. She actually kind of took all my thunder away because that was almost what I was going to say. At this point, you know, we have to look at this as, is it appropriate to make this change? It is more appropriate. At this point, the, that business currently is a conditional use. It does have a 12-month moratorium or a 12-month time limit once the business goes out. After that, I'm not sure, Andrew, does, can it be, Mr. Dutton, can it be, if the 12-month ends on a conditional property use, can it go back and be requested to continue that conditional use, or does it completely fall away?
Yes, it would follow the conditional use process. Again, after those 12 months, it'd go back to the planning commission, and they'd consider it like it was a new application.
Okay. Okay. So that does take one, little bit of a sting out of it, but the fact of the matter is, is that that particular use for that building actually is permitted within the C3, and obviously, it's probably better to have the building in a permitted use versus a conditional use. And with that, I will, I've said all that I was planning on saying. I will turn it over to the rest of my fellow council people for any questions or comments that they might have to the people here in the audience. Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. I was not aware that the conditional use was expiring in 12 months. If I missed something on that until this evening, I apologize, but that's the first I'd been made aware of. It would be not my intention to make the property more difficult for Mrs. Stein to sell in any way. I mean, it's obviously just built as a conference center, so that, you should be allowed. I wasn't aware of this condition. Did I miss something, or is that just being brought to light tonight?
I mean, at this point, yes, it's being brought to light tonight, but I guess from my standpoint, I already knew that. I mean, I knew that from the standpoint of just, just to my knowledge of zoning code. I mean, I knew that that was the case, and it actually came out in a conversation that I had with a community member last week, is to, okay, we're having this conversation, but keeping in mind that, you know, it's not a big deal because it can, basically, we just go back to planning commission.
Yeah.
They would request, you know, they would request a conditional use, and at this point, more than likely, not putting words in planning commissions, but more than likely, they would probably approve it just simply because it's already been done there.
That's what it's been.
So yeah, why would it change?
All right. Well, good. I didn't want to negatively impact potential sale and use of that property, so.
Understand. Anyone else in council have any questions for the two people that spoke earlier? Mr. Cavan?
When was the conditional use set to expire?
Well, it's 12 months after the, it's 12 months after the business's ceased operation.
And has that happened?
I don't know. Mrs. Stein, is that the case?
Yes.
It has happened?
June 25th.
Of this year? It will?
17.
Of 17, so it's already expired?
Close to it.
What, June, 17 to 17 was the last event you had?
The last event was probably the 18, but finishing up business.
So it'd be May of this year?
Well, it'd be June, June 16th of 2018. So it's a few more months down the road.
So at that point, it would revert to C3 back anyway?
No, no.
No, C1.
No.
No, zoning wouldn't change.
Zoning wouldn't change, but their variance expired.
The conditional use of the building would then expire, and then they would just have to reapply for another conditional use if it was to be sold or to be reutilized again for that utilization.
Gotcha.
Yes, sir?
I guess just in summary, so this kind of solved, if this proposed zoning change were adopted, it would really solve both problems. It would, it would solve the problem so that no one would have to go back to planning commission for a conditional use because it would be a permitted use under a C3, correct? And then it would open up the door for Raj's project, Mr. Chandon's project. I guess I see it as a win-win. I was aware that it was a conditional use, but I was not aware of the timing of the expiration, so thank you.
I do have another question. Linda, Ms. Abellbaum, you and I discussed last Friday, what was, what was the outcome of that inquiry? I mean, in terms of, I mean, if we were to...
We're not that condition of property.
No, we understand, I guess we understand that, but specifically, if this, if we passed, if we changed the zoning to C3, and let's just say, in 12 months, Mr. Chandon, for whatever reason, decides not to proceed with this, and I'm not, I'm not saying you're not, I'm just saying, you know, hypothetically, with that, then if we felt, if there was a compulsion within council to say, okay, we would like to see that property revert back to C1, do we have the purview to do that within...
There is a process where...
But it is, but it is, but it is doable. It can be done legally, is the question.
Probably. I mean, what I mean is that you can only do it within the confines of the law, so you can't, there's certain things you can't discriminate against.
No, I understand.
And then there's some other issues that come up if you're just going to do like a spot zone kind of issue.
No, I think...
But Linda, by...
But council can...
Ordinance 1119 point 10, action by city council. If we can at any time reverse our initial approval tonight, based on a vote, a majority vote of council. Joe Ford...
The process would be that you could initiate it?
Yeah.
Then it would go back to planning commission, just as if some property...
Then it would come to council again.
It would come right back.
Yeah, so yeah, we have that control, yeah. And that was, I thought you copied everybody on that. Joel was gracious enough to follow up and write there, very simple process. Yeah?
Good.
You just can't tonight. I know some people ask you earlier on...
There's no such thing as conditional approval. We got that.
No, we understand.
But there's a process to address that.
We have the ultimate.
We can apply to change the zoning same as anyone else, and that's what we're talking about.
If council has no further questions or comments, I would motion to pass ordinance 2018 dash 006.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders is our second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Could you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number 2018 dash 006 passes. And Mr. Chandon, you don't look like a man that tilts at windmills, so I'm all be expecting to have a drink on the roof of Holiday Inn Express. As my, as the commercial says, that doesn't look like my daughter's father's Holiday Inn Express. It sounds like it's going to be quite, quite a nice place.
Yeah, nobody says Holiday Inn. Thank you.
So, all right. Thank you for investing in this city. Appreciate it. That brings us to new business. Resolution number 2018 dash 021. And this will be presented by Mr. Bastancic, and I note that it's budgeted, so it shouldn't require suspension of the rules. So before I get to you, I am told that Mr. Paulo has to read this, so if you would, please.
Resolution number 2018 dash 021. A resolution authorizing the director of administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the construction of a bike path along certain city roads.
And this will make Mr. Myers happy because I know he loves his bicycles, so. Turn it over to you, Mr. Bastancic.
Okay, thank you. This is a request to authorize advertisement and award of contracts to the lowest and best bidder for constructing a bike path along the west side of Bell Avenue. I'm going to go through all my notes, Roger's notes, I forget. Along the west side of Bell Avenue from Bloomington Avenue to Williams Point, from Williams Point along the south side of School Court, and across the old Leighton School property to Burbank Road, and Burbank Road and north along the east side of Burbank Road to Highland Avenue. And this will be for construction of a 10-foot wide asphalt bike path. And this will connect the College of Worcester to the new trail along Burbank Road north of Highland and to the existing Kenny Trail. And all the construction management and inspection will be performed in the house by Roger and his crew. And this is a, this is a total estimated cost is $825,000, and ODOT is picking up $712,500, which would leave the cost to the city of $112,500. All right. Any questions, or does Roger have any additional comments?
Nope, that's it. This is phase one of the bike trail. I'll be coming to you later for phase two, so right now, they're moving utilities out of the way, so I got my authorization from ODOT to advertise and award a contract, so keep it going as we get it built this year.
Well, this is a pretty good return on our investment, isn't it?
Yes.
There are no other questions?
Could I make a point of clarification? Being an old Worcester guy here, Williams Point always meant where Williams Texaco was, down where Burbank and Cleveland come together. So I don't want people to be confused at all. Where this, it means is where Bell Avenue and Cleveland come together, up in front of the hospital there. So that, I don't think that's called Williams Point, but I may remember it differently. It's not even a point. Well, it is a point, but I just want to make sure everybody's clear on where we're going with this bike trail.
Yeah, there is a point facing north there.
There's like that gold buy-sell place.
Yes, exactly.
Just south of Dan Wakefield's new building.
Yep, or just north of Danways. Yep.
Any other questions from council? If not, administration like to put this on third and final so they can get the bids in?
Since it's budgeted.
Since it's budgeted, that's right. Hey, I would move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bastancic is our second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2018 dash 021 passes. And we're looking at ordinance number 2018 double oh seven. This will be presented by Mr. Myers, slated for three readings. Mr. Ansel told me he was going to recuse himself on this matter, so go away, Mr. Ansel, and we'll call you back when it's all done. Just kidding. Okay, would you please read the title there, Mr. Paulo?
Ordinance number 2018 dash 07. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with Baker Properties, Mount Vernon LLC, and compacting for certain tax incentives.
All right. Mr. Myers, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Bidenberg. This is fairly straightforward. It's an enterprise zone request. We've had these many, many times before. They, it has been recommended by the city school board and the planning commission here in town, and Jonathan Malay as well, that it meets with the requirements of the abatement. I think this evening, we have a couple folks here to speak on behalf of it. I don't know who would like to speak first, but...
I could go.
Go ahead. Yes.
Seeing you're the only one that signed up, and you said you were going to speak, I would be shocked if you did nothing, something else.
Wouldn't you be shocked if you didn't?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, you're up.
Okay. Well, Justin Starling of the Worcester Chamber of Commerce, I have a couple of board members here in support of the project, and really, we're here to encourage your support of ordinance 2018 double oh seven, which is an enterprise zone application, obviously, for a $120,000 square foot, $3 million facility off Old Mansfield Road. Couple things. We're excited about the proposal as it is the second significant project to be undertaken at the former Bella House property since August 2017, which really, at that time, the property was nearly vacant in August of 17. First project, the developer, Jerry Baker, who was here, mostly undertook was an investment of the existing facility of, he says, over a million, $1 million upgrade. And the nice thing is, those upgrades supported the relocation, which will happen this spring, of RBB Systems, a longstanding Wayne County company, Alton County, into the city of Worcester. So that's additional tax, tax, tax rules to the city. 90-plus employees at the end of the day that project's going to bring in, so that's great for us. The second project, which is the subject facility this evening, if it is approved tonight, it will bring much-needed distribution and manufacturing capabilities and capacities to the Worcester market. We talk about space being limited, and that's true. It will also add additional employees to the tax rules and create space for a potential manufacturing operation, which we're excited about as well. At the chamber, we feel strongly that the support of legislation is in keeping with our reputation as a community that promotes and welcomes industrial development. We've got a number of boards throughout the nation for our business friendliness and want to keep that moving. We feel that it's important that when a project meets the requirements, and I know councilman Myers, you hit on that, this project not only meets them, but far exceeds the requirements of the program, that is supported and approved in a timely manner. Lastly, I know that the developer proposed a similar project back in 2005, of which the enterprise zone tax incentive was not supported. This resulted in the construction of, the tax card reads $8.5 million.
That was 15.
2015, did I say so?
2005.
Oh, 2015, what, that's a lot. Resolving the construction of the, the owners have it valued at $8.5 million. All of that tax revenue goes to the county and the Triway City Schools. So such revenue from that facility will be blocked forever. Worcester City Schools will not get a dollar of that. So that considered, we again encourage council this evening to support the proposal. So, that considered, we again encourage council this evening to support the proposal and secure this, uh, important investment in city Worcester and for the Triway Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I recall that last project, and I kind of support the Triway schools as well, because we did take away their tennis courts and had to buy new ones, so. Uh, Jonathan?
Sure, I'll just add, uh, in, in the report that we included for the summary, we did a breakdown of what we expect the impacts of projects of this magnitude to be. Uh, we understand, uh, based on those metrics, that for the first, uh, ten years that the abatement would be in place, that, uh, this would generate approximately twenty-two thousand dollars worth of tax revenues for the, uh, school district, uh, largely to the school district. And cumulatively, over the course of the ten-year abatement, uh, up to, uh, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in tax revenue that would be in addition to what would be created if nothing is produced there. Post-tax abatement, it would generate a total of ninety-one thousand dollars at the maximum level. Mr. Baker, who is, uh, the owner of Baker Properties Mount Vernon LLC, was recognized in the, uh, twenty sixteen Comprehensive Annual Financial Report of the Wayne County, uh, um.
Auditor.
Auditor, thank you. Uh, is being, uh, the top seventh, uh, taxpayer for the county. And, uh, we've worked with, uh, three separate enterprise zone agreements that have successfully, uh, worked their way through the process over the last, um, about eleven years at this point. The two having expired this past year, uh, they are actively, and actually, the, the company is now paying two hundred thousand dollars extra this year in real estate tax for those projects, uh, that were recently completed, and will be paying another forty thousand dollars starting the end of this year for their, their third and final enterprise zone project to date. Uh, so, so that said, we find it a good opportunity for, uh, tax creation, revenue generation, while still, at the same time, there is income tax generation possibilities with this. Uh, the project meets the minimum criteria for a expedited review as well. Uh, that's, uh, fashioned, uh, from the ordinance made in two thousand and seven that provided, uh, projects met a certain level of criteria that they could be reviewed in short order. Uh, so, that being said, uh, tonight, this is being presented with your consideration for an expedited review if possible, and that will allow the developer to take advantage of a critical construction window. And, uh, as far as, uh, I'm concerned, on the economic development side of it, creating, uh, future revenues and opportunities for our city, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to say, Mr. Baker's a, a business person who's been very successful in our community for a very, very long time. Uh, if his, uh, assessment is that this is needed in our community, then I would concur. I've also talked to other people in, in the industry, uh, that he's proposing this for, and there's definitely need in Wayne County. You can't find any storage, distribution facilities, they're all full. And our businesses locally are looking for this, so I think there's a demand. And I think it's the right thing, uh, for that area of, of our, of our city, so. The last thing I'll say is, Jonathan pointed out, that if we do nothing, or if we turn this down, the property remains, uh, in the schools, and everyone else gets less tax dollars. So, even at the abated, abated rate, they're gonna get an increase in the current tax dollars that they're getting.
Almost three times the amount of the, of.
Right. So, uh, with that being said, is there any questions from city council? Yes, Mr. Sanders?
Jonathan, you should help me talk to the developer more than I have. The abatement money that the developer will save on this over ten years, is this actually needed to complete the development, to make the numbers work? Or is this just a wish?
I follow by his words.
The, the amount of money that the developer will save on the abatement over ten years, from what I've heard, is up to five hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
Is this money needed to make the numbers work on this project? Or is this just a wish list?
No, this, these are numbers that factor into the business plan. So, uh, as Mr. Sarland had pointed out, we previously had entertained another motion for a similar project. And those, those tax savings, uh, allow the business to recoup the cost of the initial three point five million dollar investment, up to three point five million dollars, and also per initial hiring. So, when, uh, the tax incentive being provided, it helps make Worcester a more affordable place to develop. Our tax rates are about twenty-five percent higher when you're on this side of the corporate line than when you go to one of the townships. So, in order to help incentivize development, to, to generate more revenue, we provide this to encourage the business to, hey, you know, in the long run, you are gonna pay more taxes being in the city of Worcester School District. Why? Because we have one of the best school districts there is in the county, so we, we provide a ton of services, but we do pay for that. And so, one way to lower the cost for the average homeowner is to entice developments such as this, which, uh, warehouse can easily, uh, end up being taxed at a hundred thousand dollars per year. That type of revenue coming into the school district offset hand-hand to the other entities, including the city of Worcester, we, we retain some real estate tax as well. That offsets the cost and demand for tax dollars that we would generally need from our residents. So, that being said, the need, uh, allows the business to grow.
Well, you could say, yeah, I mean, you could take the other, the other, um, way to say this, that by giving a tax abatement, um, you're making, residents end up paying more, because they're gonna lose the additional money over the next ten years. In fact, there's only, like, when I saw, if I read this correctly, there's only gonna be about nine jobs or ten jobs.
The minimum number of jobs are committed for, for this project. Ten is the minimum error of entry for the city of Worcester. Other, other communities have, have lower numbers. Uh, we've, we've set ours at ten, so this project meets that. Now.
Just to, just to, you know, see where I'm coming from, so you don't think I'm just spilling that stuff out. If I read it correctly, it's, it's basically over three years, they have to, um, employ at least ten new jobs, create ten new jobs, is that correct?
A minimum, yes.
So, if they keep that minimum of ten, we're basically paying fifty thousand dollars per job over the next ten years, correct? Because that's what the amount would be, with a hundred thousand dollars.
You will lose money without the development. So, so on the table today is, we have vacant land that is taxed at a set amount. With the building going on.
Well, I, I know, I understand all that.
So.
I'm just, I'm playing, I'm playing ponti-. Those that know me know I'm not a fan of industrial tax abatement, so.
We're getting that, Mr. Bastancic.
Well, I think these are important questions, because I've never heard them asked.
They, they have been asking them. You're welcome to ask them, and go right ahead.
But I think they need to be brought out, is my point. So, where were we?
So, well, well, we were talking about what, what do residents lose by granting an abatement to a factory coming in? So, so the thought is that, well, if the, if the factory is not abated, then the residents would get the full benefit of that tax value, except for in this case, and, and also based on past performance, it is cheaper and less expensive for that developer to go, just in, in this case, actually, across the lot line. And so, there, there, there is a, a strong incentive not to develop in the city because of our tax rate without this type of incentive. So, therefore, if that property does not develop, residents get nothing in terms of industrial, commercial tax revenue. That in turn feeds for the residents ultimately having to invest more, and, and more of that demand for revenue falls on the residents. With a project like this, we're able to invite in a business, and we're, we're making an investment in the business in, in the same, same rounds. That business wants to invest in our community. We're investing a little bit by saying, hey, we understand, we're, we're in a more expensive place, you have other options. Welcome to, to Worcester, we, we have great resources, you're gonna benefit greatly from that. And for the first ten years, make sure that your business is successful as possible, because the more successful the businesses, the more revenue, uh, that will flow into the city from sources other than our, our own residents. And so, that offsets costs in the long run for the resident.
Well, I've always had the impression, a lot of these abatements seem to be more of a gift than rather a need, because most, I don't know, from what I understand, most state local taxes make up maybe a half percent to one percent of the cost of doing business. And that's what you're, if somebody's making that determination as to where they're gonna locate, then that, that doesn't sound to me like it's, they're not looking at the full picture, and it's not a very well-funded product. Because if it's a, that half percent, or if that one percent's gonna keep you from coming to where you really wanna be, then it doesn't seem like a very good business decision, except that, except that we're giving it automatically.
Yeah, in that case, we wouldn't have any funding programs whatsoever. There, we wouldn't have programs like community development block grants utilized, we wouldn't have programs like CHIP, because the, the thought would be, usually, we are filling a small gap. Now, that said, the gap is a little bit larger, because tax revenues, particularly for a project like this, which would benefit the school district probably more so than the city, there's several times more than what we're gonna be generating in income tax. So, in, in fact, our property tax at four mils, which is what the city receives, will, will likely be pretty sizable in comparison to the minimum committed level. And now, in reality, money, most of our agreements perform well above the minimum, so we would actually anticipate that number to be higher. But what it does do is it creates jobs within the city of Worcester, and it creates revenue flows into the city of Worcester that is generally more expensive to begin with. And so, that allows, uh, an, an additional inflow of funding that, uh, would not be available otherwise. Because when the business does take a look at its metrics and it says, hey, you know, well, you know, for the next ten years that I'm responsible for this entity, I am going to, uh, lose five percent, uh, by being within this jurisdiction versus just going one step over, that, that does make a difference when you're dealing with this magnitude of dollars. So, we're, we're talking again about ultimately creating a hundred thousand dollars of revenue per year, just in the tax, let alone the level of employment and, and the job creation that we'll be seeing at that point. So, from the perspective of wanting to see development grow, and from the perspective of revenue generation, this, this is a choice that I, as an economic development director, would, would recommend.
Now, I'm not against the project per se, I'm glad, glad developers want to do this. I mean, um, but I, uh, to me, it seems like the school system is taking, always takes the brunt of the, the, the hit on this. I mean, most of this is gonna be the school system, the city gets very little of this.
Mr. Bastancic, that, it was approved by the school board, they, they, they're in favor of this. You know, I, I, although, although the, although the, the conversation that you're, you, you have here is valid to have that conversation, uh, the enterprise zone requirements, that would be where we would address whether it was valid or non-valid, or the percentage rate. It does meet the requirements, uh, of, of the application. I mean, discussing whether we wanna change those requirements in order to favor the developer less, the school system or the city more, we can certainly have that, but it does currently meet, the applicant has met the guidelines.
Mr. Bastancic, I think also it's important to note that, and I'm gonna reference, Joel's presentation on our, our water rates for a moment. Joel talked about being fair, uh, but he also talked about a, a factor of increase on the commercial side to ease the burden for residents. And I think it's important to understand that in our current tax structure, the burden is proportioned against business owners. Business owners pay more than their fair share of tax to take the burden off small resident taxpayers. So, I want you to understand that. The taxes that a business pays are, A, it's multi-level, and B, it's at, at a much higher percentage. It's not apples-to-apples when you're looking at a resident. So, to, to me, as a council representative, uh, I try to look at, how can I ease the tax burden to make this project more successful? Make the chances of its success greater, because I'm not taking a risk on this project. Jerry Baker's company has taken a risk on this project. So, so just the risk in and of itself is a great burden. Uh, there are no guarantees, there's no crystal balls, there's no, no one who's got the future figured out. So, so there's, there's a lot of calculations that go into this project, and a lot of projections that are made off data. And, and for me, i- if I can, if I can ease the tax burden, then it makes the project more possible, and it lessens those risks. And, let's not forget, and it just so happens, it's this developer who had an opportunity at a tax abatement here i- in this city, and it must have made a difference, because the project still went forward, but it didn't go forward within the city of Worcester. So, so that's proof that, that, that wasn't just a, it wasn't just a wish list. It was part of the business plan.
Well, I could go on and on about this, but let's say, let's just say right now, I can, I can debate this all day with you right now.
Does that make sense? I mean, does that help?
I understand what you're saying, but I don't think the, if you, if anybody does any research in the economics of it, most, most places, most, most sources will tell you, state property taxes have very little to do with the cost of doing business, it's just the numbers aren't there. So, basically, what it's come down to, we're giving, we're paying somebody to do something that, in most cases, I'm not gonna say all, there's no such thing as all, as absolutes in this, but in most cases, we're paying them to do something that they're gonna do anyway. Now, may not have worked with Mr. Baker's, um, warehouse, but in most companies.
Let me, let me remind you.
They wanna come here for a reason.
Let me remind you, there was an organization that sat out here not long ago and made the comment, whether we get this abatement or not, we're still moving forward. And this body decided not to grant the abatement. So, that's, that's our, our right, and I know that's the organization that's, I think, currently still under investigation.
No, I was gonna say that.
I was here for that meeting.
I'm trying to put you in that boat.
But that's my point, right now, that's my point.
I have one thing I just wanted to add. The city of Worcester, we, we are business friendly, but we're also very business fair. So, there are certain requirements with the agreement that we are gonna be putting in place with this firm or with any firm. If there is an issue with performance, we do have means, and as long as we're operating here, we are going to demand that, we're making an agreement, we're providing some incentives. We expect performance out of that. And if that is not going to be provided, the city does retain the option to cease an abatement, or even take back the abatement savings that have been granted. There are over a thousand abatements that have been granted in the state of Ohio through the enterprise zone program to date. And Worcester is, is, is one of many communities that offers this program. And, and we don't give away the, or we're not offering a hundred percent fifteen years that some communities will offer, because, you know, we have taken a look at those economic measures.
Right.
But I promise you that we will make sure, and we will follow through to ensure that the side of that economic coin benefits the residents by making sure that performance is kept, and that if it's not, we have a conversation with that business. And we will, if we need to, cease an abatement, and we will claw them back if we need to.
Have we, how many times have we done a claw that?
Once.
Worcester's among the very few in the state of Ohio who has. Again, we're very business friendly, but we are business fair. And I promise you fairness with that.
Well, I have a question for you, Mr. Bastancic. The city isn't really getting hurt. The, uh, schools signed off, so, you know, since the city's not getting hurt, who are you representing tonight? The city of Worcester or the city schools?
City schools. I know, I know where the money comes from, it comes from the city schools. They're the one who wanna give up the, they're the one who's gonna actually take the less tax money for.
And that's assume, and that's all based on the great assumption as to whether or not that would still be built. And one of the things that's never addressed, and I've brought it every time, is this doesn't even a- address the infrastructure that has to go in to, to build it. I, I know the, the one was out there at, uh, where Stone Craft was gonna be. I think Mr. Baker invested, which he didn't recoup, and had nothing to do with the abatement, over a half a million dollars in infrastructure. That's a, that's a big pill to swallow in, in terms of, well, more than that. That, that's the number that, you know, stuck in my head, wasn't a million? But, you know, that doesn't even, that, the abatement doesn't even address that. So, there's more to a project than meets the eye. The schools go ultimately get more money. The cities go get more money in, in terms of, uh, um, over ten years, it's gonna be three times that than what the vacant land would, uh, produce. So, I, I guess, since the city isn't really hurt, the, the, the one's taking, you might say, a loss, and that's assuming this project would be built anyways, is the schools. And they've already agreed to it.
Well, it does have to do with city taxpayers, though. I mean, they own property. If, if, if the school system is not bringing enough cash in, for whatever reason, because, I mean, it eventually falls upon, everybody pays property taxes eventually, that's, it ends up paying for these, in a sense.
This is an increase.
I, I understand what you're saying, you bring in this much to get this much.
But your assumption's built on the house of cards that this, you know, they're gonna build it anyways. If, if they don't build it anyways, then. If they don't build it anyways, then, then, yeah, it does come out. There is nothing coming out of the coffers if we grant this, out of the city's schools.
I understand that, it's, I understand what's coming in, but what we could have is a lot more.
Well, we could have, but that's based on the assumption they build it anyways.
Most of them do. I'm not saying at all it's always like that.
I think I disagree, and I'm sure...
I'm fairly confident that Mr. Baker could move this about 400 yards west and be outside of the city and still contingent with his other property.
Well, I have a question. You say 10 jobs, is that correct? And what is the average salary of that?
The average salary of that is, I apologize. It's about $28,000 per year as a minimum. Actually, $29,000...
Is that full-time jobs?
Yes.
$28,000 a year? $29,000.
Those are the requirements of the enterprise zone...
I understand that, but we don't always follow the requirements, Mr. Myers, when they come back to us. Do you remember?
Yes, we have.
Because when it comes back, we're going to, and if they're not met, we're going to pass it again.
But when they're, what's applied for, we pass it based on the application.
Yeah.
But you're right, you have every right to not approve it next time.
No, I'm going to. I'm going to vote for it.
If they don't approve the requirements. When we go to review it in the future, I concur with you that we should be, have the opportunity to remove that tax abatement if they...
We're going to have the opportunity, and by God, I hope you vote to turn it down if it does, and they're not met.
If he does not meet the requirements, I will join you in voting.
Yes. Great. We've got that on camera. Thank you.
Is there any other comments or questions regarding this?
I said my piece on that.
Thank you, Mr. Bastancik. Nothing further? If everyone's comfortable, I think I'd like to go ahead and offer to make this emergency and waive the rules this evening, so we can move this forward.
Okay, there's a motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Myers. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Could you please call the rule on the suspension of the rules?
Bastancik?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Now, the rules can't be suspended, so we'll have to say this had its first reading. So, ordinance number 2018-007's had its first reading.
How many votes do you need?
Six.
We need six. Yeah, we need, yeah, all...
We need six out of seven.
Okay, moving right along, and we should recognize that Mr. Ansel has joined the council. And is at his place. Brings us to the final reading, or final piece of legislation, which is the Amendment of Resolution Number 2017-16, which will be presented by Mr. Sanders and is slated for three readings. Before I get to you, Mr. Sanders, could you please call the rule?
I'm going to have to read it first.
I said, before I get to you, Mr. Sanders, would you please call the rule? Meaning you, clerk, or council, not Mr. Sanders.
Yeah, but am I supposed to read the title first?
And I so, read the title instead of call the rule.
Have you had supper yet?
Well, I had the hour and a half, but please read the title.
Can I read the title? amended resolution number 2017-16, a resolution imposing a moratorium on the granting or processing of permits for any building, structure, use, or change of use that would enable cultivation, processing, or retail sale of medical marijuana within the city of Worcester and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have this before us this evening, simply because we had told the community that we were going to try to do this in 12 months, and I'm not entirely sure whether we're going to hit that 12-month window, but in any event, what we are, what we are doing is putting an end date on the moratorium, and that end date will be at such time that council passes the comprehensive amendments to the city planning and zoning code, which, at this point, hold on to your hats, is coming our way, hopefully, in the next two weeks. But in any event, that will be coming, we will be doing it at that time, and the game plan is to have this, have these updated planning and zoning codes prior to this, prior to our summer break. So, like I say, what we have tonight is nothing more than an amendment to the resolution to basically put an end date on this moratorium to the point of when we adopt the new zoning code. Now, we'll open the floor for any discussion. Mr. Myers?
My understanding from the Ohio Marijuana Controlling Board in Columbus is that all application deadlines for all marijuana-related activities for the state of Ohio have closed and expired.
That is absolutely correct.
So, there'd be no possible way for anyone to make application between now and the next three or three months while we approach the zoning issue?
Probably unlikely that we'll have anything changed between now and the end of the year. However, it is the state of Ohio. We've only, we've only gotten paddled from them more times than we can bear to count.
Perhaps the city would have to make a, vote to make a change, or we'd have adequate warning to a change.
Well, we might, we might not. I mean, at this point, I'm not heading, I'm not going to, I'm not going to play our cards in the, with the assumption that the state isn't going to do anything. Because at this point, this, I mean, anytime I think we've seen in this body that the state isn't going to do something, it's almost guaranteed that they're going to do something, and it's going to be just the opposite of what we want them to do, and it's going to be completely counterproductive to the needs that we have. In this case, with all, we, like you said, with all this posturing, if you will, this evening, this is simply just to make sure that our ducks are lined up, so if something should happen at a state level, we are not going to be caught at the short end of the stick.
Okay, thank you.
And with that, if there's no further questions, I would motion to suspend the rules of council and place this resolution 2017-16 on third and final reading.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Sanders to suspend the rules, seconded by Mr. Ansel. Would you please call the rule on the suspension of the rules?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bastancik?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Would you call the rule on the motion to adopt, please, Mr. President?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Nope.
And Bastancik?
Yes.
Okay, amended resolution number 2017-16 passes. I see there's a couple of Boy Scouts in the audience. Hi, gentlemen. What troop are you from? Are you here for, like, the citizenship and... Yep, well, welcome. That brings us to the miscellaneous portion, and we'll start with Mr. Myers.
Thank you. I've got several issues this evening, real quick. I do want to point out that I do wish the hotel, Holiday Express, great success, and I don't vote against the hotel in particular. I think that they, it would be well-suited for that location if it can be done within the guidelines of our current ordinances and zoning. The second is, I want to say congratulations to the city and Jonathan on the grant for the bike path, and to our, hats off to our county engineer folks for undertaking the planning required to implement those funds. Well done on everybody's behalf. And then, last, I know you all are familiar, because I asked you to fund, help fund some of the transit issues and taxi issues with vouchers in our community, and we greatly appreciated that program. Under the leadership of Community Action is going very, very well. I had it written down, I believe they sold, no, no, I got it right here, in February alone, they sold 2,125 passes. Over 500 of those were blocks of people using those to get back and forth to work. So, it is a well, well-working program, and I'll invite all of you, I have a flyer here for you to remind you, but on March 23rd, on Friday, anytime from 7:00 in the morning to 10:00 in the afternoon, or in the evening, this is free to everybody, not just sitting council, by the way, you can ride for free. It's the Worcester Transit Bus System, there's a route map available online, and I have one, but I encourage you all to just hop on it and take a short little ride, just so you can see what the service provides. And they have recently actually expanded this route to cover some of our residential communities west of where they had been going over on Mindy, and so they've added to the service, and it's going well as well. The ridership in February for that transit line was over 800 people. And again, those are people going to doctor, going to our businesses to shop and do things like that. So, that program is going well, and I encourage you, if you can, come out on the 23rd and take a free ride.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bastancik?
I'm good.
Mr. Cavan?
Nothing to add.
Mr. Ansel?
Nothing this evening, Mr. President.
Ms. Warden?
I'd just like to thank everyone that came out on behalf of both sides of the Wayne County Humane Society discussion. Thought it was interesting to hear the perspectives of everyone, and, you know, I hope that we come to a resolution that will please everyone, and hopefully, in the near future, that has inspired the Humane Society or the Wayne County Commissioners to look into possibly obtaining a humane agent, because I think we could, everyone in this room could probably agree that that is a very important matter. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Silvestri?
I also wanted to thank all the residents, citizens who came out to talk about the Wayne County Humane Society issues and opportunities. I guess I just didn't get a chance to voice this, but for the sake of time, I didn't want to take up the time then, but it occurred to me that, you know, maybe we should have folks that are already in a law enforcement capacity as humane agents, and I don't know what the possibilities are, but, and I know it's apples to oranges, it's not the same thing, but I wonder how many of our Worcester police officers might see it as a stepping stone to take extra training to be able to assist the Humane Society with some of those duties. I know it has, I know it's completely different than being, for example, a canine handler, but, like I said, that just occurred to me, that maybe we could come up with a partnership, maybe it could be a volunteer. I know we rely on both our firefighters and our police officers to do some volunteer work, like working out and things like that. I know it's just kind of a friendly competition, I don't think, I know there are job requirements, but daily workouts, for example, are not a requirement, although there are physical requirements that are part of the job. So, like I said, I don't know if that's been explored, I don't know if that would be something that the administration would entertain, but that thought occurred to me, and I figured I would throw it out there for discussion. So, I think it was a good productive night. Troop 61, you said?
Yes.
I think you picked a great night to come out and see local government in action, so I wish you the best in all your future endeavors. Thanks.
And, Mr. Sanders, give me the last term.
I have nothing to add, Mr. President.
All right, so, I see you moved to adjourn.
I did.
Second. Second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.